Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, October 28, 2013. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sherilyn, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Lennon.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I'd move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion? Sherilyn, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Next item of business will be presentations, and we have three presentat-- excuse me, four presentations on the agenda this evening. The first one is the Beautification Commission, who is going to award our Halloween awards this evening, and, ah, yes, nope. And you're looking very Halloween-ish in your lovely outfit this evening. How are you? And not scary, beautiful, I mean, in a nice way.
Can you hear me this time? Yes? Okay. First of all, we'd like to thank Roseanne, the DPW lady, who really was instrumental in getting some help in getting these photos, because it was a pretty fast endeavor that we started. We weren't even going to do this until next year, and then we decided, heck, it's not Valentine's, it's Halloween, so let's do it and see how far we can get. So Roseanne enlisted the help of the code inspectors as they went around. That's teamwork for you. I really, really appreciate that. And there's a specific code inspector, Dave Fabrice, who took a couple of photos, and he actually is a good photographer, too. Anyway, the first one, we had four awards and two honorable mentions. The first one is 539 East Hazelhurst. By the way, all of these are cemeteries.
I've got a theme going.
Although it was not taken at night, he, the man whose name is Kevin Pierce, who owns the house, he came out and inflated the cat on the roof and the skeleton on the motorcycle, and he got some of the noise going along, so it was pretty spooky even though it was daylight. The second one is 1446 West Hazelhurst, and the owner of that house is Dale Cyan, and he is here tonight.
Oh, nice.
And he says, we were talking to him, he said, "It's only going to get better." So this was really impressive. The entire front yard was surrounded by, I guess, improvised wrought iron fence, and then all of those structures that you see that are brick are not real. They just look it. And so the entire front yard is not, does not have that brick entrance, but it, tonight it does, and it says, "The Hazelhurst Manor." I think that's about it. The next one is 215 Fester, and that one was not lit up when we went by, and Suzanne Rowe went back and took a number of pictures after dark. And it is the eeriest thing. The whole house just kind of glows in orange. I'm glad she was able to get back and take a picture of that one. That's 215 Fester. The fourth one is 473 West Camborne, and this is a ceremony, a wedding ceremony in the cemetery, and has strobe lights going on, and the lifelike characters in there are really scary. They scared me in the daylight.
Nice.
The honorable mentions, unfortunately, we do not have pictures of them, but the one, one of them, was named in the Friday section of Homestyle maga-- newspaper, in the prepress newspaper. And that one is 440 West Lewiston. It was called Zombie Date Night, and it had a chandelier hanging from a tree, and it's just these two very scary-looking characters with blood, head on a platter, and blood dripping off the table, and just very, very cool. The other one is 715 West Breckenridge, and there was a sign outside of the house there that said, "Beware of zombies," and it was another cemetery scene. All of the cemeteries were very different, but they were all equally scary. And, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good Halloween.
Thanks. Thanks for all that work, and thanks for everybody who decorated their house. It looks great. It does remind me, by the way, there was, in case you read the Woodward Talk and you read that Halloween was canceled in Ferndale or moved to October 26, that was a mistake. Josh at the Woodward Talk has been kind enough to print a reflection, but Ferndale is on, Halloween in Ferndale is on this Thursday night, as always, so just to make sure there's no miscommunication about that. But thanks to the Beautification Commission for all that hard work. The next presentation will be Ferndale Public Schools, and I see School Board Member Amy Butters is here to tell us what's going on with our great school system.
Good evening. I wore, on casual Monday today, I've got my shirt that says, "The Dale," and I wanted to let you know that these t-shirts are for sale by the Ferndale High School tennis team. And if you're interested, I thought maybe especially the Ferndale City Council might be interested in this particular shirt. They do have them for sale at the athletic office, or if you want to give me a, send me an email, I'd be happy to put you in touch with that. They're raising money for the tennis team, so 20 bucks will get you one of these cool t-shirts.
What is the black, it looks like a number one?
Well, it's a number one.
Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, tennis, tennis, I don't know. I'm not sure what the reference is.
All right.
They aim to be number one, I'm sure that's what it is.
There you go.
So there's a whole lot going on in the schools right now, where I've got a lot of, quite a few items to share with you. I'll try to go through them fairly quickly. Of course, the first thing that I have is the Ferndale Marching Band goes to state finals this Saturday, and they are performing first up Saturday morning. So the send-off is actually at 7:55 in the morning, so if you would like to come and line the streets with your good luck signs and, you know, support, they will have a police escort out of the city. They, the state finals are down at Ford Field. They will have their competition, which begins at 8:15, and if you were interested in attending that event, make sure you bring cash only, for the admission is only cash. I think it's, I don't know the amount, I think it's about $15, something like that, for admission into that event. They will be performing at 10:15, and then they'll be returning about 12:30, so if you see their parade coming back about that time, that's when they'll be coming back, about 12:30 that day. We've got the high school marching band up on the screen, so thank you very much for helping me with some visual aids. It's the, the title of the program this year is called End to End, and I've seen it several times at the Ferndale High School football field, and it's really, really a great show. And so if anyone wants to go and cheer them on at state finals. Along the same lines of fine arts, last weekend, last Thursday, we had our first performance at our newly renovated auditorium. It was the Hijinks and Hilarity Concert, which featured the orchestra and the choir at the high school. And it was, it's always a great, a great event. They have the, they invite the kids in the audience who are dressed in costume to come up for a treat, and there's lots of, lots of comedy involved. And this year it was a Disney versus Star Wars kind of a theme, and so there was lots of familiar music, and the kids, it amazes me how they are able to pull off that concert so early in the year. You know, these kids are really talented, so that was, that was something that was just last week. I wanted to share with you a couple things about some alumni that we have. I've got a slide that is a screen grab from a YouTube video. This is Katie Olsnavage. Thank you, there's somebody out there who knows her. She is a Ferndale High School graduate, and she is doing her graduate work at MIT.
Nice.
And she is working on designing prosthetic feet that will be easier to manufacture and use around the world. And there's a YouTube video, if you search, you know, MIT and her name, Katie Olsnavage. She refers to her experience on the robotics team at the high school as inspiration that led her to this work at MIT, and I just wanted to share that with you. And another bit of alumni news, one of our graduates at University High School, Angelica Brown, just graduated in the spring, she is on the Oakland University Women's Basketball Team. So another one of our alums going out and doing great things. I think there's another slide, the next one maybe is from our news, our district newsletter. Our longtime employee, Henry Gold, is our deputy superintendent, and he is retiring this week, and he has been with the district for 44 years.
Wow.
And he is retiring. He's, he has been a teacher over at the high school, he was an assistant principal, and now he's deputy superintendent. And we honored him last week at our school board meeting, and I was glad to be able to read a statement from Councilman Galloway about Henry Gold. Councilman Galloway was one of his students, and shared some thoughts about the work, the work of Henry Gold. So I want to, I know there's a lot of people out in the community who either had him as a teacher or worked with him in other, in other regards with the district, and we want to honor his longtime service in the district. All right, a couple more things. Next Thursday, at Grant Early Childhood Center, we're having an event for preschool-age kids. We're inviting them to Preschool Science Night, and the Ann Arbor Hands-on Museum is going to be there. So it's going to be a lot of different activities. It's next Thursday, November 7, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Grant, and there will be scientist activities and onsite preschool enrollment for children ages three through four, three to four, who qualify. So we'd love to have, to see some young families at that event. And just one more thing about a teacher that I wanted to mention, we have a teacher over at University High School, his name is Eddie Connor, and you may be read about him in the Woodward Talk. He is also a graduate of Ferndale High School, and he was, he, there was an article about him about his nonprofit program called Boys to Books, and it's specifically for students with literacy issues and issues facing teenage boys, and he received some recognition for that program, and I wanted to highlight that. And then I just wanted to thank the city for a couple of, couple of activities that I attended in the last few weeks, the Hilton Fall Festival. I helped with a few of the games at that, at that event, and it was great to see a lot of young families out for that, for that event. And also, I was at the ribbon cutting for the Boys and Girls Club at the Kulik Center, and these are just a couple of examples of some great collaborative efforts that we have between the school board, the school district, and the city, and other nonprofit organizations that we have in our community, and I just wanted to call attention to those, to those events. It's really great to see that collaboration. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amy. Did anybody have any questions for Amy or the school? Thanks, as always, for coming. Appreciate it. Our next presentation is going to be a presentation on the election improvements that our city clerk has instituted since the last election. And Sherilyn, you're going to lead that presentation, correct?
Sorry for the technical difficulties. Windows 8 is a challenge. All right. So, a year ago, November of 2012, we had unacceptably long wait lines at all of our precincts. So, following the election, we formed a task force of folks on the front lines, our workers, our voters, our officials, to get together and talk about how we can reduce lines and enhance the voting experience. We examined feedback from all areas, from the people who were working, from the people who had unhappy experiences, from observers like Kate Baker, who was outside precincts campaigning, and we found that the comments fell into three main categories: the need to recruit more workers, the need to provide better training for those workers, and the need to provide more information for our voters. We began recruitment of new workers immediately after the election. With every call and every email from residents who had comments about their experience, we encouraged them to help us be part of the solution. And then using the Franklin County, Ohio, as a guideline, they have a program called Champions of Democracy. So I talked to them, and they were kind enough to let me pretty much copy it. So I unveiled that in September through the Mayor's Business Council, and it's a partnership that we are going to continue working with to get employers in the city to make it easier for their employees to volunteer some time on Election Day, because those are the folks who have the computer skills, the management skills, the process skills that are needed in this new age of electronic elections. We then used the introduction of that program to blitz traditional media with press releases, posts on Facebook and Twitter, on our website. We reached out to community groups, our seniors, of course, Michigan Works and others, and we will continue to expand that effort as we enter the 2014 state election cycle. But our efforts so far have paid off. In 2012, we had 52 total workers signed up for the election. This year, we have 70. Now, some have not returned, so this is, actually represents 23 brand-new workers who have signed up as a result of our efforts, and we are thrilled. So going from 2012, where we had an average of five workers at each precinct, we're going to have an average of seven at each precinct this year. Second area that we are focusing on is training. Because we did not have an August election this year, the deputy clerk and I took advantage of that, and we attended training that was held by a city clerk in Macomb County, who is renowned for her expertise, and she's often asked to be a speaker on election administration. And from the programs she has going, we took her computer lab for the electronic poll book, and Marnie put together an exercise and has been here early every morning and late every night, putting our inspectors through the paces on the poll book. So they are getting lots and lots of hands-on experience, and in the process, they're understanding the actual process and why we do what we do, and how what they do at that poll book affects what happens at the end of the night and whether or not we get to go home at a decent hour. So about one-third of our total group for this election has so far attended one of these sessions. Then we took all 10 of our AV counting board members over to Oakland County last week. We, the senior center gave us one of their buses, and Lloyd gave us one of his drivers, and we took a field trip to Oakland County, and we got to see hands-on how to process the AV ballots, because we have a lot of new people in those boards. We have people who have been there for such a long time that they're still doing things that aren't even necessary anymore because everything has changed. So we're real excited that everyone's on board with those as well. And then, of course, this Friday, we'll have mandatory training for all election inspectors, and that will concentrate on the proven methods of efficient processing, any changes in laws, and we're going to do a lot of focus on customer service and managing the flow. Because we have so many new workers, we're going to be able to let our chairpeople really be focused on managing the precinct and being able to see where the bottlenecks are happening and respond to those. Then we have the voter information piece. Again, we're going to use media, both traditional and social media, to start letting our voters know what their options are, why things happen the way they happen. I sent out a press release today, and I'll send out a couple more between now and next Tuesday, that kind of give voters information that will help them have an easier voting experience. That will include the need for them to check and make sure they know where they're registered. A lot of times, voters don't understand that their voter registration does not automatically follow them from one location to another. When you go to the Secretary of State to change the address on your driver's license, you should be asked, "Do you want to change the address on your voter registration?" Well, we've all been to the Secretary of State, there's a lot going on, we're focused on anything other than our voter's registration, so sometimes that communication is just missed, and your voter registration does not get changed. So you show up at Ferndale to vote only to find out that you are still registered in Oak Park. We've, we've had people who have moved here from Texas, who were just shocked that we did not know they had moved here and didn't register them to vote here. So there's a real disconnect from the state level down to our residents on how the whole voter registration process works. I've got another slide that'll give you our phone number, the website, michigan.gov/vote. You can look up where you vote, what your ballot looks like, how to use the tabulation machinery in your precinct, a map to your precinct. And then another thing I'm very excited about, and this was actually our city manager's idea, is voting ambassadors. And again, we're able to do this because of the great response to our plea for election workers. We'll have someone out in the hallway with the voters waiting in line, who can answer their questions, who can make sure they are in the right place, who can give them a sample ballot, who can kind of direct traffic, who can aid voters with physical difficulties so they're not standing in line when they really are having a hard time standing in line. So here are some ways that the voter can make voting easier for themselves. Find out now where you are registered to vote. Go online to michigan.gov/vote, or call our office, 546-2384. We are open for AV voting every day, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. until 5:30 p.m. We will also be open this Saturday, November 2, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. for AV voting. You can get an absentee voter ballot up until 4:00 p.m. on Monday, the day before the election. You have to come into the clerk's office in person, and you have to vote the ballot and leave it here. You can't take it with you. But if you suddenly find out at the last minute that you're called out of town, or your aunt is sick, or for whatever reason, you're suddenly not going to be around in Ferndale on Election Day, come get an absentee voter ballot. And, and just a word of common sense, our precincts are going to be busiest before work, after work, and during lunchtime, so, you know, from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock, you're going to have everyone trying to get in to vote before they rush off to work. From 5:00 until 7:00, it tends to be busy, and then from 7:00 to 8:00, you know, you may be getting into a situation where you're, when you're waiting in line. So just take that into account. Does council have any questions for me?
Any question to council?
A question, just a comment. I think this is really thorough, and you've done a great job. And what's great about this, too, is while I have high hopes turnout will be high on a municipal election, historically, they don't run the same as a gubernatorial or presidential election. So we have several cycles to implement and refine and re-measure as we go. So your timing is impeccable, and I think this is great. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I would just echo the thanks. It, you know, stuff happens, and we did have unusually long lines, but I applaud you and your department and Marnie. We didn't make excuses, we didn't, we didn't, we acknowledged that some issues happened, and you really dug in and, I think, did a very thorough job of analyzing what happened and how we can improve it. And so we look forward to improved election this time, and as Dan said, probably won't be the turnout that we had a year ago, but this will be a good test run, and it's really impressive, the number of people that you've recruited. I think getting new blood in this system, I mean, our old workers are great, but getting new, getting more people at the polls will go along.
Response is fabulous, and I, it's just another example of how committed and involved people in Ferndale are.
Thanks. Thanks, Sherilyn.
I made one more comment, too. As you do go to vote, thank your election workers. It's a long day without a lot of pay, and you're doing it for doughnuts, so, literally. So, I mean, you know, I think we should thank all those folks that, I mean, that's a phenomenal number to have here, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a good amount of work, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherilyn. The next presentation is going to be by the Downtown Development Authority, and I see Christina is here. Good evening, Christina.
All righty. Making sure it works. Let's take it forward through. Well, first, I would like to start off with a big thank you for everybody who came out this weekend, on Saturday, for our hoedown to celebrate West Nine Mile and our streetscape project that we have been working on for, for so long, for the last few months. All of our businesses that have been really, they have been, you know, absolutely like role models as to how to manage streetscape projects in your downtown. So we're very pleased to say we're almost done. We have about two more weeks of landscaping to do and a few, a little bit of touch-up work, but the road is open, and you'll see that there are bike sharos out there, so, and you'll see more of them coming. There's a few more that have to be laid down. And we also want to thank our DPW for taking a little bit of extra time this past weekend to hang up some banners, too, because there were quite a few issues in the hanging component of it, so we appreciate all their, their efforts as well. And thank, of course, our council for having the hot spot to say, "Yep, let's do this project and get this done." It's, as I had stated before, it is about economic development and starts with the public sector, and you guys have definitely have shown that in many instances throughout all these years, and especially this one. Also, we want to thank Publicly Congressman Sanders Levin for coming out, because that was a nice little surprise to see him that day, and Dairy Queen for some ice cream cake, and State of the Art for putting up some new public art for everyone to enjoy downtown. And congratulations goes out to Dynasty Media, who opened up in one of the former vacant spaces in that district, as well as Western Market, who is celebrating 30 years in business in downtown Ferndale. Great milestone there.
Yeah.
And before I get into my presentation, I also wanted to make an announcement that we will have this Wednesday, October 30, at Tram's Meadery at 9:00 a.m., our FerNet networking opportunity for businesses and those who want to network with our businesses. We will be talking about safety and safety in your business to prepare for the holidays. There's a lot more people coming through, and you need to set up, be prepared, and have your employees prepared for, for the season as well. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about Downtown Ferndale's Holiday Hoof event and Fest of Ale. Holiday Hoof is a fundraiser to support art in downtown Ferndale. It is supporting the Art Town Project. It will also kick off our holiday season on November 23. We do plan to do our tree lighting ceremony that evening as well at 7:30, and we are working in conjunction with One Eye Betty's to put on a Fest of Ale, which I'll tell you a little bit more about in general, a little bit later. So to find out more about Holiday Hoof and to register, you can go to active.com and register. If, those of you who might not be familiar with active.com, it is a online registration portal for a lot of frequent runners, so you can actually kind of just log in and get your information loaded and easily on there. You can also go to our website at downtownferndale.com and click on Holiday Hoof for a printable registration form, and you can either then mail it in, email it, or drop it off. registration form, and you can either then mail it in, email it, or drop it off at our offices. We are located at 149 West Nine Mile Road, just a couple storefronts west of Woodward. We invite everybody to get in on the fun and motivate each other through downtown Ferndale's Facebook page. We've set up a Holiday Hoof page, as well as for Twitter's, just to pound Holiday Hoof whenever you're saying something about Holiday Hoof. And you'll also see us at a variety of events throughout this season where we're promoting the events, but also on other websites. We were just at the Detroit Marathon Expo Center that they had for a couple days and received a great amount of interest in the event, so we're really excited about that. So to prepare for this, it is a four-mile obstacle course run, starting on West Torrey Street and going in the west, north, south, excuse me, southwest quadrant of downtown Ferndale, of Ferndale. Early bird registration, actually, that's a misprint, I forgot to change that, ends November 1st, or 15th, and it's $50. Regular registration will then go until race day, so you can register on race day, and that will be $60. You must be 16 years old or older to participate in the obstacle course run. For the two-mile fun walk that we have, all ages are welcome, and registration is open through race day for $20, and kids under 10 are 10. Participants, we are providing to you two free passes into Festive Ale, which is a Christmas craft beer, Americana music, and cold-weather comfort food festival. You'll also receive a commemorative cup as part of your registration, and jingle-bell wristlets, as well as a Day Glow necklace. This run is at night. We will also be encouraging people to wear headlamps, reflective clothing, as well as get into the holiday spirits and get decked out for the holidays. We will be having competitions for those things, too. Whoops. And back to sponsors real quick. We do have sponsorships still available. The good thing is, is Festive Ale is actually sponsored by One Eye Betties, and that is a large sponsor that is coming in and partnering with us. So far, I, we have also been able to bring on Gage Products, Allstate, State Farm, Snap Fitness, Home Depot, as well as Western Market will be providing food as well. For the pre-workout, your event schedule for that day, 12:00 noon, registration opens, as well as Festive Ale. Start time is at 5:30, and then the walk time is at 5:45. We will be going off in waves of approximately three minutes and planning about 250 runners per wave. Tree lighting ceremony is at 7:30, and awards will be at 8:00. Festive Ale does close at 12:00 p.m., however, the party does continue inside at One Eye Betties. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that in, right now. So for those who are non-runners and non-walkers, and you just want to come out for Festive Ale, tickets are on sale for that specifically now, and those are $20 in advance, or $25 at the door. Yes, that would be you making.
We've got a bunch of people.
We're both sitting here going, "All right, Howard."
We're both circling.
But I have to say, for those of you who even want to try running, it's a really good deal to go to run, and you'll get two free passes into Festive Ale.
I was the last runner on the DIY street fair, so you can have the cops follow you in.
We do have a SAG wagon that will pick up anyone who can't make it within two hours.
Ouch, ouch.
But what you'll see at Festive Ale is that there will be Christmas beers on tap from Bell's Brewery, Dark Horse Shorts, and Arbor Brewing Companies. There will also be limited specialty taps of St. Bernard's Christmas Ale, I almost didn't say that right, Van X Christmas Leroy as well. Music will be Americana music, The Ragbirds, Crane Wise, Ryan Delahoe, I always pronounce that wrong, Northern Skies, Appleseed Collective, Misty Lynn and the Big Beautiful, and Oak Bones. You'll also see out at Festive Ale, we'll have vendors out there, so you'll be able to kind of check out some of the wares that they're providing. There will be roast beasts, so there'll be, I think there's elk and lamb and goats that will be roasted up, giant tart fillets and apple strudel, as well as inside One Eye Betties, there will be a Short's Tap takeover. So all those, if anyone, anyone has been up to Short's Brewery up north, you know that there are a good amount of beers that they do not actually bottle, and they're great tasting, and this would be the place to go and try them out at. So, and there will be, thanks to our fire department, bonfires, and of course, a heated tent for those who want to stay in some warmer areas tonight. So we encourage everybody to get out there, get registered. There will be QR codes on the bibs for race results. As I mentioned, you get Day Glow Necklace, Jingle Ball Bracelet, and two free passes into Festive Ale and the Commemorative Cup. You can also purchase a hat or t-shirt online as well. And the race course, as I mentioned, is in the southwest quadrant of Ferndale, so you'll be going through some of our lovely parks and through the high school grounds as well. And awards will be going to top male and female times, best costume for both kids and adults, most lit up, so we're talking light here, and team spirit, as well as largest team. So we do encourage everybody to really get in the spirit and get involved. We are also asking if any council members would like to participate in the judging of the team spirit and largest team, team award and the most lit up. So we can get to the details on that if anyone is interested in that.
Thanks for that, you know. Somebody like that, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
I'm the last runner.
To give you a taste of some of the obstacles, and since this is our first year, a lot of these are sketches, and we're starting to put a lot of the obstacles together currently as well. When you start, you will start under a tunnel of lights. You'll then enter into the hay, the reindeer haystack that you'll have to climb over, and then through a maze of candy canes, and into the elf tunnel. I know, I love that photo. Over-under bridge, so you have little areas that you have to go up and over some planks, as well as deck the balls, yoga balls filled with water that you'll have to get around. Rudolph's roof climb, climbing over a couple platform areas. The wreath ladder, as our contestant here, Ed, from C and D R, tried to do the other day. And, whoops, went too fast, sorry. And at the high school, there will be two obstacles. One will be the sled pole, so that will be a weighted sled that you have to pull in a track, and then also the Santa Bag Hall, which will be a Santa Bag filled with sand, and put it on your shoulder and run up and down a hill. Night sky crawl, under, crawling underneath, I believe it's about 30 feet of lighting that you'll be crawling underneath, and then our Yule Log Jump, over fire.
Wow.
And last but not least, our ice slide. So this will actually, this is an inflatable slide that everybody will have to climb up and slide down in order to cross the finish. So, and that's it. I would just want to encourage everybody to get out and run. We love running downtown Ferndale.
Hey. Thanks, Christina.
Yep.
So Mike, you're signing up, right?
I'll be your first judge.
All right. Very good, thank you. Our next item of business this evening is a public hearing, actually, our Special Assessment Sidewalk District for 2013. And Lloyd, do you want to just introduce that item before I open it up for any potential public comment?
Mr. Mayor, tonight you have before you the Sidewalk Special Assessment District for 2013. A little over 14,000 square foot of sidewalk that was defective was replaced, and had a total cost of about $88,000. One significant thing to mention, council, is that the change council made last year where the city would be responsible for sidewalk that was damaged by city tree roots has gone over very well with residents. That's easy to predict, I suppose. But we have not received any complaints or concerns from residents this year, either at City Hall or DPW at the Engineers' Office. So, that said, the total cost for the tree roots was about $11,000, and the sidewalk that the city is responsible for at Kulik Center, also at Detroit Parking Lot, and some of it related to the tree roots, is about another $17,000, so.
Good. And I would just add that all the residents in that district were notified that there was a special hardship committee meeting this evening before council meeting where they could come and apply to council to have that, to, as a hardship case. We did not have any residents attend that meeting, so, which is unusual, but they may be here tonight. So what I want to do is I want to open up the public hearing, and is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on the 2013 sidewalk replacement program? All right. Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will open it up to council. Council, do you have any questions about the program, comments, or a motion would be in order?
Well, the program's the same as it has been in the past, just other than the tree, tree issue.
That's right.
Well, I, if I may, I just wanted to thank Lloyd again for making the program better and listening to residents and helping the city come up with some different solutions to deal with some common complaints that we've had over the years. So thank you.
And I've got to say, you must be doing something light, Lloyd. This is my 12th public hearing on sidewalks, and this is the first time where all the seats haven't been filled with angry people coming forward. They have nobody show up is, I don't know, I'm speechless on that. I can't believe it. It's the, it's the worst meeting of the year consistently, and it doesn't look to me too bad tonight, so, thanks.
I'd add my thanks to what everyone else said. There was one component of the conversation last year, though, that I'm hoping we can address at some point in the future, and we addressed some of it with the trees that were on the city property. That was one piece of the conversation. But the other piece that came up is when we talk about either worksmanship or quality or why we end up having to replace these things as we go, and do we track that? You know, are there trends in, in why we're replacing, why we're replacing? Is it simply age and they wear out, or are there other things that we see in the work that's done, or other impediments that cause this?
The most significant thing that's happened both last year and this year was vandalism in some of the concrete before it was completely set up. In fact, the contractor who was awarded the program last year is in the process of replacing 50-some-odd slabs of concrete, completely replacing them, plus a number of other slabs that were slightly damaged that they were able to grind or polish in order to take the graffiti out. Many of it is, you know, school-aged children who happen to get out there on their way home from school, and the concrete's not set up, and they take a stick or some other object and scratch into the concrete. And because, you know, the concrete is spread out over a large area, it's very difficult for the contractor to monitor it 100% of the time. And so the contract and the specifications that we write do make them responsible. And so they, you know, we will again follow up this year with our inspections, and any of that required replacement will be done at no charge to the city.
Great, thank you.
Lloyd, just a couple of things. I'd add my thanks for the hard work of your group in making sure this process goes smoothly, especially since, you know, I live on Leroy, so this is, these are my neighbors that would have been coming and yelling at us this evening, and they're not, so thank you for that. But I, one of the questions I get a lot, and I know the answer to this, but I'd like you to explain it to residents, is why we're doing all the curb cuts on the ends of the streets and what we're doing there. That question comes up a lot.
One of the city's goals is to make all of the city infrastructure to people of all physical abilities, so we want to comply with the latest handicap accessibility rules, and by replacing those ramps, and I should mention, they're not at a charge to this individual citizens, that is a cost that the city bears.
Yep, thank you. Yep, so to make those ADA compliant, and it has the rumbles, so that folks with visual impairment know when they're approaching a street, correct? Yep.
Yes, truncheon domes, and it's oriented in a specific way to give a cue to residents with limited visibility so that they know they're about to cross an intersection.
Thank you. Get that question or not, thank you. All right, so if there's no other comments or questions, a motion would be in order.
I will move to confirm the assessment role for the Special Assessment Sidewalk District 2013 and spread the special assessments on the 2013 winner tax rule unless granted deferment by the hardship committee.
Support?
It's a move by Lennon and supported by Galloway. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Sherwin, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to call to audience. Call to audience, as I think most folks know, is a half hour now and more time if we need it at the end of the meeting, for members of the audience to speak on any issue that they like that's not on the agenda, because you'll get an opportunity to speak to that when we get to that part of the agenda. Three minutes to speak on whatever you would like, say your name and address, and come on up. Crystal, good evening.
Hi. Crystal Praxmeyer from the Oakland County 115 News, formerly the Ferno 115. I'm here because there's a tradition that I think needs to be continued and honored. For as long as I have been living in Ferndale and writing about city council meetings, before each election, a dedicated community volunteer named Dennis Hefner would get up at the meeting before the election and urge people to get to the polls and vote. Dennis spoke in a very patriotic way, reminding people that living in a democracy is a privilege and that voting is a responsibility. He would manage the low voter turnout numbers and remind us that in other countries, people do not have this right, and even that people have died to protect the right to vote. Dennis's words speak to what those of us who come to or watch city council meetings already understand. Voting is important. But in addition to carrying forward Dennis's message, I'd like to add in my own, mostly because I know firsthand how it feels to be cynical and apathetic. My generation, those of us who grew up with music videos on MTV, shows like Jerry Springer and biased talking heads replacing real news, we were raised not to care, and the low voter turnout numbers show that. I get it. The choice between Tweedle Dee and Tweedledum and the inefficiency of the national government is enough to turn people away from politics and elections. But somehow, we need to rise above this and teach people that there's more to politics than the frustrating national narrative, especially here at the local level. Municipal elections have the lowest voter turnout, but they also have the greatest impact on the day-to-day lives of individuals. Do you want your streets plowed and kept up? Do you want nice parks? Do you want lower costs? Do you want investment in economic development? Do you want crosswalks, bike lanes, public art, giant American flags? Whatever it is that you see when you walk through your neighborhoods or drive down your streets happens because of who you choose to represent you. This election matters, as do all local elections. There's plenty of information out there, and I hope that those of us who get it can do a better job of explaining to the cynics why this is important. I urge you to get out and vote, but since you are already spending a Monday evening watching the meeting, you probably already will. So I'm asking you to do more. Share political information and even online news stories with your friends and your neighbors. Bring your kids to council meetings or to the polls. Post a picture of yourself with your "I Voted" sticker to Facebook and tag me so I can share it. And above all else, take the time to get involved year-round and understand the way things get done in your community and why your vote and your voice matters. Dennis left us in January, and his wife Marty passed away just a couple of days ago. Marty's visitation, for those who would want to know, is Wednesday, and her funeral is Thursday at Spalding Current. Dennis and Marty showed not only why voting is important, but what good things can happen when people get involved in their community, not just at election time. They went out of their way to welcome me back to my hometown and help me find my voice, and I hope using it to share Dennis's repeated message will do some good. And I hope you will use your voice and vote on November 5th.
Dennis would be proud.
Absolutely. Words to take to the heart. Ann Haller, 1024 Leroy, speaking as board president for Fern Care Free Clinic. Just two things. First of all, we have a fundraiser coming up, Fern Care's for Fall. We're going to be at Leon and Lulu's. We were there last year, and we're going to be there again. It's a lovely place in Clausen, where, by the way, we have patients from, so it's absolutely a fitting that we spread ourselves around. The fundraiser is on Sunday, November 3, from 1:00 to 4:00. Besides, of course, meeting everyone, that's wonderful, at Fern Care and raising money for Fern Care, Dino's has, is going to do the Noshes, the little finger foods, and this time, Western Market has provided three wines. These are fall red wines to taste. We did this last year. It was a smashing success, so Jared... So Jared over at Western was up against the wall to think of three new ones for us to try. So if you're interested, please come, because if you like them, of course, you can go to Wonderful Western to do that. It's $15. You can go, of course, on the Fern Care website through PayPal or just pay at the door. Sunday coming up, November 3, from 1 to 4. So please, I absolutely invite you all. The second thing is Fern Care again has a waiting list, again, for a while, therefore, three weeks. We were down to about 10. We are back up to 60-plus people on our waiting list. But once again, we encourage people to call the appointment number 248-677-2273, because the three women that work the phones have many other clinic resources for you, some free, some sliding scale. So call, because if it's not possible for you to wait like that, they have other alternatives for you that might be, in fact, exactly what you need. So please, please call. Try not to go without Medicare. Without medical care would be wonderful. The second thing is on November 6, the Affordable Care Act is here. I'm probably not the first person to tell you that at all. But on November 6, at the library, we have a presentation on exactly how to enroll in the healthcare plan, in the insurance exchange plan. We have somebody coming in who does this all the time and will be able to answer. She has a presentation, but also enormous amount of time so that people with questions will absolutely be able to get their questions answered. It's at the library from 6:30 to 8:00 on Wednesday, November 6, and it is, of course, absolutely free, co-sponsored by us. So for people who are interested, or if you're just curious and you just want to see what in the world the website looks like, come, because that's what we'll talk about and also help you figure out how in the world you do that. The third is that Fern Care is an authorized site to train people who will assist others on enrolling in the Affordable Care Act Insurance Exchange. And as soon as that schedule is available, I will absolutely be here to let you know. There's going to be at least, I believe, four organizations that will be able to assist you. And as they train, as people get trained, those schedules will come up. And believe me, as soon as I have them, you will have them for people that will need assistance. And that includes probably some assistance at the library. The library has been grand, wanting to help in any way that they can.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So that we will do that for you. But just to let you know, it's in our minds. Phone calls, by the way, are usually 15 to 30 calls a day. With the October 1 announcement date and beginning date for the Affordable Care Act, they've gone up to about 45 a day. Just questions around the exchange, questions around the website, questions around, you know, I missed October 1, does that mean I'm out till next year? All kinds of questions. But we are thinking about the community and are going to do what we can to help. So, thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Sherry Wells, 315 West Troy. Speaking of elections, we have several opportunities for people to look at the forums that a bunch of us had been at. The Legal Women Voters, the FairFerndale.org should have it on their website, as well as WFRN showing both of those. And there's questionnaires in many different places that we've already answered that are available for people. We have 10 days after the election to remove our lawn signs from your yards, and I ask that you give us the chance to do that. I plan to do mine the day after the election. The wires can be reused, reuse the cardboard signs. Sometimes I reverse them and put garage sale or something on them so they can be reused or at least recycled. So do not throw them at the curb, because then we can't get them. Leave them somewhere where the rest of us can pick them up. We have 10 days to do so, but most of us do that before then. Also, election working. I've done that a number of times. Sherilyn doesn't let me work the election when I'm running.
Talk to your legislators.
Oh, that's okay. We're busy that day. And people have been very good at thanking us for the work. And yes, we do get paid for that day. But as I explained to people who asked, the payment for that day is, depending on how long a day is, whether it's minimum wage or maybe slightly higher. But the community service part comes in with going to bed early the night before so that we can be there promptly at 6:00 and being pretty wiped out the next day. So, the thanks does help. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening.
Julia Music. My address is on the sheet in the back. Community, Ferndale Community Foundation hosted Taste of Ferndale last Wednesday at The Loving Touch. Community Foundation awards micro grants to projects taken on by nonprofits in Ferndale. Taste has brought in nearly $7,500 so far this year. Thank you to our sponsors, Garden Fresh Salsa, Luke Care Network, Ferndale Electric, Blooms by JR Design, The Loving Touch and their staff, and all the businesses and individuals who donated auction items to the event and the attendees for their generosity, especially Dan Martin, who donated a dinner with himself as one of our great auction items. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, our items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. Let me take a moment to read that, please. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held October 14, 2013. Item B is to receive relocation expenditure report on court and police renovation project expenses to date. C is the approval of the emergency expenditure of $7,178 for the purpose of restoration services to City Hall to be built to the general fund, public service, repair and maintenance account. And D, approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Is there any discussion questions on the consent agenda this evening? If not, Sherilyn, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda this evening, we just have one item, and that is the consideration to appoint Mark Burton to the beautification committee for a term ending December 31, 2014. I don't see Mark in the audience, unless I'm missing him, and I don't think I am. So, we won't ask him to say a few words, but we, the council has his application and he's qualified for that position and...
Oh, yes.
Any, what is council's pleasure on this item this evening?
I can move to confirm the appointment of Mr. Mark Burton to the beautification commission for a term ending December 3/1, 2014.
Support. All right. Moved by Lennon and supported by Galloway. Any other comments, questions on this item? If not, Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Burton, wherever you are, for your willingness to serve. Last item would be the call to council. Chief of Police, Chief Collins, anything for the good of the city this evening?
Two quick things, Your Honor. Over the weekend, we had a prescription drug drop-off program that we do every three months through the DEA. And this particular quarter, we got like 45 pounds of prescription drugs to take care of. So it was a very successful, probably twice as much as we normally get. And we will put that on our website every time that that comes up. It was very successful this time around. The second thing I have for council and for the community is remember we have Halloween coming up, and we, of course, want as many little ones to come out and have a good time. But we do want to caution parents to please don't follow your children in your car. Get out, walk with them. We have a problem with folks just following their folks, their little ones down the street instead of getting out and walking. It creates a hazard. People, the headlights create a visual situation where people can't see down the street. So we're asking the folks to park their car and walk with their little ones. But happy Halloween to all of them.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening?
I'd like to add to Chief Collins's safety message. If everyone could restrain themselves from raking their leaves out until after Halloween, the DPW's doing a great job of collecting them. The canopy hasn't fallen completely, but that's another problem between cars of having the kids cross and having the leaves as part of the blockage and that, so. And then when the leaves do come down and you do rake them out, please don't park them, because then your car catches on fire. So that's another problem.
As we learned last year, right? Yep.
Yep. That happened quite frequently, so we need to watch out for that. Angels Night is the night before, and hopefully everyone will be well behaved on Angels Night. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Derek, anything from economic development this evening?
Nothing.
All right. Lloyd, anything from the DPW department this evening?
Unfortunately.
All right. Very good. I'm not missing anybody, right? All right. Sherilyn, anything from the city clerk's office this evening?
Nothing further tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing further. All right. April, from the city manager's office.
Just a couple, actually, just one item for now. You'll notice that around some of our parking kiosks, we now have new lights. So we're working through the timing on all of those. So we have 10 new lights added to the parking stations to help address the lighting concerns that folks had. So DPW's been monitoring them, as well as the parking enforcement officers, to make sure the timers are working correctly and that all of the lights turn on at appropriate times. So we appreciate everybody's patience on that particular issue.
Good. Thanks, April. Dan, anything from the legal world this evening?
Nothing.
All right. Dan Martin, anything from your perspective?
Yeah. As I mentioned a couple times, we have an election a week from Tuesday, so there's two points I want to make. One, three, I guess. One is vote. Please, I can't do it as eloquently as Crystal did or as Dennis has done for years, but the municipal level of government impacts daily life so much more than other levels on a day-to-day basis, so I highly encourage everyone to get out to vote. Secondly, I want to thank everyone who stepped forward this season to run for office. This is not an easy thing to do, to put yourself out there in front of the community, to put your beliefs out in front of everybody. I think we all do it with the best of intentions and the best of reasons, but through a campaign season, we're willing to drag ourselves and our families through what is not always an easy turn, but we're doing it for very noble causes. And then it turns out after the election, we're willing to serve afterwards beyond that. So the good news is it's the right thing to do, it's the right way to do it. The spirit of self-governance is alive and well, and there are people who continue to, who are willing to put themselves out there, and that's a beautiful thing. So thank you, everybody who stepped forward to run. Lastly, I want to conclude and point out that over the last two years, I've had the privilege of serving on this council. I think overall, we've done a good job in making sure the city's in good shape and that we are well prepared for the challenges ahead. I don't think everything's been flawless or easy. I don't think anyone would say that, but I have appreciated a very collaborative and strong working relationship between council and staff. I look forward to Greg Pollica joining us up here next year in January, and I would like to publicly reiterate my support for Mayor Dave Coulter and Mayor Pro Tem Melanie Piana, and wish them the best of luck on Election Day, and I would encourage folks to support them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lennon?
Yes. Much has been said, much has been read recently, that this is a free-wheeling council, that is willing to spend money at the drop of a hat. Well, on the contrary, a dozen years ago, Judge Longo had a vision, and so did the state of Michigan, and that was do something with your courthouse and your police department. Unsafe and not ADA compliant. Judge Longo started collecting, tacking on a little bit of extra money to his fines, and came to us last year and said, I have it. And I have it, I'm going to include the police department. Not a dime is coming from the general fund, not out of any taxpayer's pocket is a dime coming for the police and the courthouse. So I want to reiterate that. It's been said that by certain people that we're spending money, and we're not. We are, but it's fines that were collected by the judge. Also, we took a gamble, but it paid off. We spent $9,000 on a program and it saved us over $100,000?
We're looking at...
Very proud of our employees. Very proud. I'm sure everybody saw the Free Press article. Great, great job. Maybe we can get some of the retirees on this program, huh? But I just want to say that. And over this half, this last several years, I've had the pleasure of working with two great mayors, very fine individuals that really care about this community. That would be Mayor Porter and Mayor Covey. However, I've established a great working relationship with Dave Coulter, and I want to reiterate also that he has my support with for mayor for this year, upcoming year. Of course, my dear Melanie, my colleague, you know, you have my support. And again, I look forward to Greg coming up here January 1. That's all I have right now.
Thanks.
Though I do want to say, get well wishes to two court employees that have Judge Longo and Court Officer Rich Matrell. They had a couple of medical setbacks in the last week or so, so get well soon. We look forward to having them back to work.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. Melanie?
Yeah, I would like to announce the Dale's Group is having a special Halloween event in our neighborhood, starting from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday. This is the first time we're doing it, but we're having a table set up for trick-or-treating so parents and their kids can come by the table, get some cider, donuts to, you know, pile on the sugar that they're eating from their trick-or-treat bag and get to know your neighbors and help maintain a safe neighborhood as kids go out trick-or-treating. And while some people were celebrating the Boys and Girls Club ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Kulik Center, I was representing the city at SEMCOG's regional meeting. And the real big takeaway from this meeting is that the governor's office has launched a regional prosperity initiative. And what this means is that the state, rightly so, is trying to align the service areas of their state departments. If you look at the maps for all of the service areas for the state agencies, it looks like a maze, a rat maze, and none of the boundaries of those service areas actually make sense or overlap with one another. So if you're trying to make a more efficient government, you try to create boundaries where everybody at the state agency levels can direct their resources, time and energy. However, what this means for cities, particularly in our area, is that they are consolidating 14 existing planning and development regions in the state down to 10. So this means that they're going to be removing four metro planning organizations out of the system. And that means redrawing the MPO SEMCOG boundaries for southeast Michigan. And I don't know what this policy change actually means for Ferndale or southeast Michigan yet. The meeting was to present what it was going to look like and what the next steps were. And I believe cities will be voting on the new boundaries in March. That's what I was led to believe, but there wasn't too much more information about the policy implications. The real big one in there is that St. Clair County would be removed from SEMCOG and that the boundaries would be drawn over to Jackson, and that would be included in southeast Michigan. Don't understand that yet. So this was just a presentation to inform what this would mean. And so, of course, I'll be representing Ferndale at these meetings over the next couple of months, well, probably five, six months, to actually figure out what this will do for us positively and/or negatively. So, and then I just wanted to sort of pile on the election stuff. I wanted to say thank you for the citizens of Fair Ferndale for hosting an awesome forum. I thought it was the best candidate forum where everybody came and talked about why they were running. And of course, I'm running for reelection, running unopposed, so I will be already here for the next four years. So thank you to all of my supporters, and I look forward to doing some great work with the rest of council and Greg Pollica. And of course, I have always supported Dave Coulter and look forward to your election win next week.
Thank you. Councilman Galloway?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, a number of us had an opportunity to go to the ribbon-cutting for the Jack and Annette Aronson unit of the Boys and Girls Club at the Kulik Center. Jack and Annette, as everyone knows, have been extremely generous, and the Boys and Girls Club here in Ferndale is no exception. By moving it into the Kulik Center with their support, we have, I believe, five dedicated By moving it into the Kulik Center with their support, we have, I believe, five dedicated staff, three or five dedicated staff, three rooms for kids all the way from six through high school. So we're going to have the full Boys and Girls Club experience here in Ferndale. For any kid who wants to participate, the cost for a year of some great activities, mentoring, tutoring, and just fun stuff, is $25, and there's scholarship opportunities if kids can't afford that. So there's no reason why a child in our community can't head over to the Kulik Center and really benefit from that program. I think the most amazing statistic from the Boys and Girls Club is 100% graduation rate, zero interaction, negative interaction with the police on any sort of felony level, and zero pregnancies caused or, you know. So it's just an amazing organization that does great things. Our kids have been participating at the high school and middle school level, but now we can bring it down to the six-year-olds as well. So if you know someone who might benefit from that, check it out at the Kulik Center. This is the last meeting that, before the election, and at that time, next time I'm up here, I'll be a lame duck. So as I sort of start to reflect back on my time up here, I think one of my fondest memories is four years ago, tonight, actually, my son was born, and that was the Wednesday before the last big push, get out the vote. And I think one of the things that's most... One of the best things about running for office is how people cool us and help you out. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional here.
That's all right, man. That's all right.
It was such a happy time for me, of course, but I was in a heated race with Greg, and he was doing a great job out there on the campaign trail, and I just wasn't going to do it. That was it. My son was being born, and I was going to be there for my wife. I'm sorry. And for him. But anyways, sort of cut to the chase. I had some great help, and I'll always remember Kate Baker, Bridget Deacon-Crouse, Domenico Gumbelton, Melanie Piana, really kicking it out and pushed me over the finish line. And without them, I wouldn't be sitting up here this evening. Another great memory from that time was Sherilyn, making sure that my wife got an AV ballot in the hospital room, and encouraging Jack to vote down the road. So it's sort of hard to get through that, but just anybody who has the opportunity to serve, and I know, Greg, that you'll experience this, is that it's just such a, you know, it's so humbling, and it's such a powerful experience to have people step up that maybe don't know you so well, and really sacrifice their time, their money, and, you know, just really put everything they have into making you successful. And so anybody who has the opportunity, whether that's a board and commission or, you know, serving up here, should take advantage of it. And not everybody's going to win this time, obviously, in the mayor's race, and there'll be some people who are disappointed, but, you know, never stop giving of yourself to this community. It's a great community. I always say it's the best city in Ferndale or in Michigan. I truly believe that, and, you know, you get everything and more that you give. And finally, you know, one of the reasons why I feel very comfortable leaving office here is that we have a great team assembled. I think everybody here is fantastic. I think Greg will be a great addition to council, and I feel very comfortable leaving, knowing that someone like Dave hopefully is still in the mayor's seat. I've worked with two other mayors, a host of council people, and really, Dave's, some of the best of the best. His sound budgeting that he brought here, his, you know, development with the business community and interaction with them. But the thing I think that I like the most about Dave's leadership style is the team building with our staff and the cohesiveness and leadership he shows on council. So I am endorsing Dave, and will be voting for him, so thanks for indulging me this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Thank you to my colleagues. It feels a little like being at my own funeral, but thanks, you guys. I appreciate it. Just a few items that I would like to mention today. I want to reiterate that our championship marching band is going to be playing at Fordfield this Saturday, 8:15, if you can go out and support them. I know they would love it. If you can't get down to Fordfield, but you can get over by the high school at 7:55, we're going to line the streets and wish them well, so wish our marching band lots of success this Saturday. Western Market, it was mentioned earlier, they celebrated 30 years in our community, and I said this on Saturday, it's a groundbreaking, but I want to say it again. If you have to get your tube socks and your pens at the New Meyer, go ahead and do that, but if you're looking for great food and great produce and great meat, please go support Western Market. We want to make sure that they're in business in Ferndale for another 30 years, so please support our own Western Market whenever you can. I also want to, there's a gentleman that wasn't there on Saturday, and there was definitely a hole in the agenda, because Saturday, as we've mentioned before, was the groundbreaking for our new West Nine Mile project, the streetscaping. The streetscaping, a little bit more to do, but the road is done. If you haven't driven down there, it is amazing. And Lloyd Curtin, who was not able to be there on Saturday, was a project leader for that project, and just did an outstanding, outstanding job of keeping all of that together and keeping all the ducks in a row and all the horses going in the right direction. And Lloyd, I'm sorry you couldn't be there on Saturday, but I want to express the entire community's appreciation for your leadership of that project. So thank you, Lloyd. And with that, please remember to vote, please remember to go trick-or-treating, and it's not canceled on Thursday, so have a great, safe Halloween, and good evening, everyone. Meeting adjourned.